... One clear line for pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. All right, we'll move right on into the agenda. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation, a commendation. I'll read that off. Whereas the Board of Education of the Glover'sville and Large School District recognizes the swift actions of a Glover'sville High School student, whereas this individual noticed that one of her peers was in distress outside during their lunch period, she rushed over to aid the student, was able to catch the student before they fell and hit their head. This individual stayed with the student, provided words of comfort with the school nurse until the parent arrived. Whereas this individual is Lily Lissinger Winchell, be it resolved, this individual represents our district with exemplary responsibility, respect, and pride. And now be hereby resolved at the Board of Education of the Glover'sville and Large School District, Portissey Glover'sville takes due note of her swift actions and congratulates her on this accomplishment. Congratulations. Congratulations. Nice job. Congratulations again, Lily. Thank you. Okay, nice job. Next item on the agenda is, talk about Critical Friends, Lynn Mackrin, Amber Ruchka, and Nancy Lysinski.
May I use the woman that was here? May I use HDMI cord? I don't know where she went. Mr. Holleran, President Curtis, Dr. Wojewski, members of the Board, Directors, Principals, and Guests, thank you for having us. It's been a long time. I am Lynn Mackrin, and we are, I'll have my peers introduce themselves, we are the Critical Friends Group of the Greater Johnstown and Glover'sville and Large School Districts. I'm Lynn Mackrin, I teach music here in Glover'sville.
Hi, I'm Amber Ruchka. I teach special education at Boulevard.
I'm Nancy Lysinski. I am an elementary teacher, well, no, I was an elementary teacher in Johnstown. I'm an instructional coach in Johnstown this year. And I apologize for my appearance. I would never come to the board meeting in jeans. I came from a different function. I didn't, I mean, no disrespect.
And I only wear black, so we're good. For teachers, often, and sometimes more than often, the greatest professional development they can receive is the teacher down the hall. This truth has become a Critical Friends Group. Critical Friends is a group of colleagues who participate in a program of non-evaluative classroom visits and discussions for the purpose of improving their own teaching and effectiveness in the classroom. In their own words,
Critical Friends is active learning for us teachers. We want our students to guide their own learning and explore defined understandings among topics. That is what Critical Friends Group is for us teachers. We get to learn what we want in order to meet our own professional goals by actively exploring others' classrooms and talking about what we seek. Critical Friends Group is a team of teachers that trust one another, support one another, and encourage one another so that we all can compete, that we all can become our best teachers, that we can be for our students.
We do this primarily through classroom visits. Our classroom visits have two different models. One is a glow model, where teachers are welcomed into a classroom and they are there to see everything they see, to learn what they learned, and to take away what they came to take away or something they didn't know they needed. The second opportunity for a classroom visit is for a teacher to open a classroom and say, "I would like feedback on," and present something in a way that their peers can then help them work through. Afterwards, we have a very strict set of protocols from the National School Reform Faculty, of which I am a Critical Friends Group certified coach, that we use to discuss our visits. They're based on strict trust amongst the teachers for what stays and is in Critical Friends, stays in Critical Friends to better our students. But how did Critical Friends start?
I'll tell that story. So, it all started with a conversation between three colleagues, a music teacher, a self-contained special education teacher, and an elementary teacher in Johnstown. They were standing in the hallway one day, I don't know what we were talking about, what had to do something with professional development or improving our students' achievement. And Mrs. Mackrin, who used to teach at a private school down in New York City, mentioned that she used to utilize on a regular basis the Critical Friends protocols. Well, years before that, Johnstown had sent me to a training from National School Reform, where I learned about Critical Friends and these protocols. It just didn't kind of, it didn't really take off. There has to be a lot of buy-in, which is part of the reason why we're talking to you today, to explain this to you. So Lynn and Mrs. Iscano and I got together and we decided we were going to try to make Critical Friends start, try to get it started at Pleasant Avenue. So we did this kind of grassroots thing at Pleasant Avenue, and we started Critical Friends visits, and it was very successful. So based on that little piloted success, we brought this information back to our superintendent, Dr. Kilburn at the time, as well as our Director of Curriculum, Nicole Patton, and they really recommended that we, and by we I mean Mrs. Mackrin, apply for a grant from the McCarthy-Dresman Foundation. And she was, Mrs. Mackrin was awarded a significant amount of money for us to utilize substitutes to take care of our classrooms while we were out doing visits. I did neglect to say that we grew the program, by the way, just from our little piloted group, to two, to another elementary school in that time.
The McCarthy-Dresman Education Foundation funds teachers, not institutions, hence we come as teachers first. Their mission is to serve as a catalyst in maximizing the skills and creativity of educators at K to 12 levels, and in cultivating pioneering approaches to teaching that result in dynamic student learning. From our first years in Johnstown, we grew, and we piloted programs, we brought in new teachers, we brought in younger teachers, and then two of us came to Glover'sville. When we came to Glover'sville, we had the opportunity to bring Critical Friends with us. So our second year became two years, because it took from 2019 to 20 to build the trust, pilot the program, and start actual classroom visits, which we did, and you've seen on the slide. The second year, however, our classroom visits ended abruptly on March 13th, 2020, when we transitioned to remote learning for our classes. So last year, in order to spend our grant funds to earn the third year of grant money, now over four years, because the grantor was super generous in the face of a global pandemic, we were able to provide classrooms in Glover'sville and in Johnstown with teaching manipulatives. And in Glover'sville specifically, we purchased, we provided the seed money to purchase Generation Genius, which is a science platform used through eight here, and the current subscription runs through April of next year and is for four buildings, the three elementary and the middle school. This was definitely an aberration to our model, because the roots of Critical Friends are teachers learning for teachers in the classroom. This year, we were granted our full $10,000, so I'll show you the breakdown of the McCarthy-Dresman grant. The first year, the full $10,000 went to Johnstown, for that is where we were teaching. When Amber and I came here, we brought year two funds to Glover'sville at the tune of $6,968, not $10,000, because we hadn't spent all our money yet. So we brought that to Glover'sville. And this year, I'm proud tonight to present the Glover'sville and Large School District, and at 3:30, I presented Johnstown with $5,000 each to continue this work. So Mr. Holleran, please receive this on behalf of the McCarthy-Dresman. $500, sure. So Critical Friends pays for what? A teacher to leave her classroom, or her classroom needs a sub for the afternoon, and the teachers presenting or sharing need some time to come debrief with us. It's very important that we have that time. So our move back to the classroom visits, we hope to expand the photos and, and continue as we can until our resources are out. These are all the teachers, 24 in total between the two districts, who have participated in any way. Our model is visits, our model is also every six weeks to meet, currently on Zoom, to support each other, to talk, and we did that through last year as well. However, the moment I sleep over, what does the future hold for Critical Friends Groups here in Glover'sville and in Johnstown? And the answer is simply, we don't know. We come with an opportunity to fulfill our dreams and our mission with the program, the resources we have, but we do come with an ask that the Board consider, these types of programs in the future as you build future budgets. Thank you. I did cry.
We're gonna try to add that, what you're doing is certainly aligned with the email I sent you the other day about professional development and teachers leaning on each other, because certainly you don't, there's often experts right down the hall to help each other out. So that piece of this, I think, is critical, not to steal the phrase, to help an organization grow professionally from events. So that's something that Dr. Wojewski and I have talked about, and we hope to engage teachers in grade-level chairs, important department coordinators, to promote teachers learning from each other. And I love the camaraderie and relationship between the two school systems.
That is key, that is key. It's a, there's a level of trust that you have to have to be able to say, you know what, my math instruction, when it comes to using manipulatives, isn't what I want it to be. So you really have to be very vulnerable, and you have to have that level of trust. And you're not going to have that, no offense to anyone in the room, with an administrator, but you can have that with a colleague. A colleague can come in and they can say, have you tried this? Have you tried that? And, and you walk away feeling empowered, and in the end, everything that, that's going to come out of this is going to improve student achievement, and that's the goal. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies. Next item on the agenda is the Bee Cause Project, with Jen Hazard and Cindy Elsonbeck.
I don't have her person yet, so we'll talk on the phone a lot.
I'll look on the phone.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Will you pay to take this off so you can hear me?
Yes, please.
I promise not to spit all the way out to you. Greatly appreciate you having us here tonight, and I'm gonna try to go getting this rehooked up. Probably, I wasn't here.
I should just do that.
It's just, I just want to move it a little closer so I can. Yeah, right there. Perfect. So, my name is Cindy Elsonbeck. I am a beekeeper. And by history, I'm a registered nurse and a certified bees educator. So education is something that I've done for a really long time. Beekeeping, not so much. It's been a little over four years, and I absolutely love it. But even more than beekeeping and the absolutely gorgeous, amazing honeybee, I love teaching children about pollination and respect and the importance of honeybees. So, last year, I taught all of your graders at Glover'sville about honeybees and pollinators with Amy Van Austin was my contact. We had a blast. We had so much fun. So I found out about this grant, and the grant allows Glover'sville to install an observation hive, and I'll show you exactly what that means in just a minute. But the cool thing is, it allows children the opportunity to actually observe honeybee behavior and all of the things that go out inside of a honeybee house. So, next slide. So this is it. It is a contained, underlined exclamation point hive that has plexiglass on both sides. It is sealed. No bees can get out of or into this hive except through an access that is created with the installation process. So this is completely safe. It contains eight frames, and if you don't know anything about bees or beekeeping, a frame is just where honeybees build their house. So these are frames. This is the one that the Bee Cause supplies. They supply the hive, they supply all of the bees, and education material as well. And it installed on a wall, I'm gonna show you some of that in just a minute. This is Niskiuna High School. They have one. There are about 250 of these observation hives in the United States. So, that's what it looks like. It has a swarm, so children can observe both sides of this observation hive. This is the outside opening. So honeybees have to pollinate. That's what they do. And they have to collect pollen and nectar for their home, for feeding their babies and making honey, all the wonderful things that they do. So they have to be able to get out of that hive, but we don't want them coming through the school. So we drill an external hole of two inches through the outside wall. A piece of PVC pipe goes through that hole and is secured with a tuck, and this is the outside wall. This isn't just a landing board. These can fly directly into the hive, but they like to come in and stand, walk in. I have a couple of kinds, they'll come in anyway, they'll, they'll find a way, but this is the outside entrance. This is where it comes inside. See, there's a little overlap. This is of the piece of mounting. It's wood, and it's bolted to the wall. This now does not allow them to go, because this is the piece that will go into that actual hive that I showed you. So again, it's totally secure. And there are pieces, once this is bolted to the wall, it has to support 200 pounds. Once it's bolted to the wall, there are pieces in place that prevent the bees from coming or going unless we say so. So, that's what that looks like. This is tentatively where we would like to place this observation hive. And I apologize, so.
Sorry, the picture's great, I couldn't get on the roof.
And Jen came around, and I apologize, Jen. So I need to take a giant step back. So Amy was my contact for third graders, and I said, hey, Amy, I have this great opportunity for a grant for Glover'sville, for a unique opportunity, and what a great thing to publicize this awesome school district, but to say, yo, hey, we have this live beehive in our school. And she gave me a couple of teachers' names, and Jen was one of them. I reached out to her, and she goes, yes, that's great. So we've been talking and emailing, she's been reaching out to some of the administrators, and agreed that this was an awesome idea. So this is, tentatively, we thought that Park Terrace would be a great place for this hive, because second graders are the ones that have the pollinator insect curriculum. So this could be embedded right into the curriculum. I mean, how perfect. They're talking about it, hey, let's go take a look at it. So this is the classroom. It's a second-floor classroom. And this is the outside, and Jen did not climb to the screen, but that's.
It's actually, it's, can I just jump in for one?
Oh, please.
It's actually like, and when you go in the Park Terrace library and you walk to the back, it's a landing that doesn't get used. There's no like traffic back there. And Cody, is that correct? And what they, they like the spot because it's not in one classroom, so if other classes wanted to go visit it, they don't have to like interrupt another teacher's class. It's a, it's a nice, it's a pretty area, given what it is. You could have like a small group in there, and then they could, the librarian had suggested come back into the library for a little discussion in the circle in the library, so they could utilize that space as well. But it's, it's out of the way, it's a very low-track area, the outside faces in the correct direction that they needed to go. And it is on the second floor, and as Cindy described to me, when the bees leave, they only fly up anyway. So even if it were on the first floor, it's not like they're gonna fly directly into like a playground. They always go up, but it's even safer that it's on the second floor. And installation would actually be really E2, because it's right out on that landing on the, on the roof, like nobody's gonna have to get on a ladder to put anything together, which is kind of nice, so.
Yeah, perfect. And that's, again, like she said, that's why we go as the second story. Bees fly out for and up. They do not forage close to home initially. I have beautiful flowers, I planted them lovingly for my bees. Yeah, they, they pass them, and they'll usually fly two to three miles forage, because it's easier for them to go to a huge field of flowers than my pily few that I have in the garden planted for them. So they're going out, they're going up, and they're going away. And they have one job, and that is to collect pollen and nectar. And luckily for us, they cross-pollinate at the same time, which gives us delicious fruits and vegetables. But they're not looking for children, they're not looking for people, they're looking for flowers, and they have, they are non-aggressive, they do sting, but they only sting if threatened. Well, they're gonna get very threatened up here, nobody's gonna be climbing up on the second floor. So this was a really great location, I appreciate it. Very strategically planned, okay? So I have an observation hive that I take two children, and it's the same principle, but it's very small, only holds one frame, and I just borrow, I say, hey, come on, let's, let's go visit some kids. So I go into my hive, and I pull out a frame, but it's the same thing. It's sealed and it's contained, and look at that adorable child, and how much he is enjoying looking at those bees. Kids, when I take this little hive, I go to scouts, I go to all kinds of presentations. Finally, thank goodness, I'm able to do live again. The children, once I bring it out, I keep it covered, because once I bring it out, boom, the kids are right on it. And I can show this little face, because this is my granddaughter. And these are you guys, these are some Glover'sville children. So I zoomed with them last year, obviously, there were no live presentations, and you can see that they were really enjoying it, and I just wanted to show some of the happy little children's faces. So I want, I, I just am, I'm just passionate about these, as I've already told you. So I can't tell you how amazing it's going to be for your children unless I show you what they're going to see. So this is life inside a hive, and on this screen over here, we have two of the three different casts, or different groups of bees, that literally have boy bees, they're big, they have huge eyes, and they're called drones, and worker bees, and they're smaller, and they do all the work, and they're girl bees. And this is our beautiful queen, and children will be able to witness this, which is, that queen is laying an egg, right here is egg, when the bees are doing their thing, they don't mind that you're watching. They will be able to witness everything that's going on inside that hive. They'll be able to witness the life cycle of an insect. I mean, that, how cool is that? We hear about it, but they're actually going to see it. So these are eggs, they're like little grains of rice, I think they have like little threads, and then it turns into a larva, and the larva grows and grows and grows, and in three days it's covered with wax, and it goes through metamorphosis and turns into a pupa, and eventually chews its way out of the cell, becoming a full-grown bee. They're not tiny and grow bigger, they're a full-grown bee, and they begin work immediately. And finally, this is what it looks like when they bring home their pollen and their nectar. Nectar is what they turn into honey, so it's shiny, it's a liquid, and they have to thicken it to make it delicious honey. And this is pollen, different colors for different flowers, and then again, we have some lava, and this is all kept wax. Honeybees make the wax themselves, and they use it to create their home. Children will be able to watch them actually build their hive, all of the cells, and then they also use it to tuck in those babies and cover them up with wax. Any questions?
Actually, can I just jump in real quick too?
Sure, absolutely.
I just wanted to also mention that we do have the next-gen science standards coming, where testing is gonna start. I believe it, it got pushed back a little bit, but the, the testing for the new standards is gonna start in 2023, I believe is the first year, so coming. I'm actually really excited about them, because the idea is we're gonna be hands-on science now. It's just not eyes-on science, not just being shown stuff, being told stuff. The goal is to have students doing more hands-on, and it's with a focus on problem-solving and engineering skills and engineering practices, to, to solve some of the problems that are here in the world. Now, I know that you probably have heard that bees are in danger, that's like a big problem going forward, so this is a really cool opportunity to bring something into our school that is directly related to a real-world problem that kids are gonna start getting to explore and look at and think about problem-solving as early as, what's, is Park Terrace, is it kindergarten, K through two is Park Terrace? Pre-K, so as early as pre-K, they can be visiting that hive and start thinking about the importance of these bees. If I were to link it to the standards, it, life science for kindergarten, first, second grade, all cover things that are relevant to this hive, going into fourth grade, talking about communication between living things, that's big in life sciences in fourth grade. So things that I'm dreaming about as a science teacher is, you know, even having fourth graders go down to Park Terrace to visit, even having high schoolers in living environment maybe do a project with the seconders that relates to this hive. I mean, the, the sky's the limit. I have friends who are beekeepers, I have a friend who owns a business where he actually does move, removal of, of honeybees in a way that they don't, he doesn't kill them, he just moves them to a safer location. You know, I feel there are people that we could even bring in, experts that can help out or talk to our kids about, I mean, there's just so much curriculum-wise that can come from this great opportunity for our kids. So I hope that it gets approved, and, so yeah, if you guys have questions, me or for Cindy at all.
Do you have a two-inch hole in the wall? Is that concerned, the cold for the bees?
No, well, this is a challenge for the bees, and actually, the problem with the bees in an observation hive in the school is they're going to actually be too warm. So my bees out in my backyard are going to be getting very cold very soon, and they cluster together. When it's a little warm, they don't join into that tight cluster, and they sometimes think it's time for spring, and they start foraging, and there's nothing yet. So we're gonna do some things to try to limit its exposure to extra warmth during that time. Another season that can be a challenge is summertime, and there's nobody here, right? So we have this observation hive, and there's no one here. So we have a couple of choices in the summertime as we, you know, go forward with it. It can be, it can be observed myself, I, if, you know, if it's fine with the school, I'm happy to come in. There's nothing that I physically need to do for our bees, but they may swarm. So summertime, they get big, and they may swarm, so some of them may leave. It doesn't matter, they'll go somewhere, her friend can go and find them, pick them a new home. Or what a lot of schools do is they take the hive down in the summertime, and I would take the bees home with me and put them into a traditional hive box and maintain them there. And then potentially, we would get honey from them that way, that we could use somehow through the school, we could, you know, there's, there's lots of things other schools are doing with honey. We can't harvest honey out of an observation hive. So a lot of schools, like I said, they take it down in the summertime, it's hot, they are expanding, chances are, they're not gonna be as happy, and we can take them to my house. But these are all things that can plan, but they won't be too cold. That, that hole is not going to make them too cold, because they have the warmth of the room. Thank, great question.
I just have one quick one. You say plexiglass, like, how thick is that glass, plexiglass?
Very thick. It is.
Like it's something stupid happening, some kid gets, you know, crazy, wants to bust that thing, run after the school. I have two kids that are, you know, and I'm allergic myself, so you know, I got, I depend on it.
Yep, yep, exactly. And, and safety is going to be a part of this, this whole program. So, uh, Bee Cause is out of South Carolina and they provide signage that we put not only outside, which isn't going to matter because nobody's going to be there, but inside as well. So we have a sign up on what you can and cannot do and cautions because, you know, you don't want to hang on it. You don't, I mean, there are things that you need caution, so there are going to be rules for children observing it. But children like my granddaughter with her little face, you know, pointing to the bees, that thing, those, that plucky glass, glass is very durable and it's not going to break. We'd probably have more of it if it was glass glass because that's, that could shatter. But so it is secure, they can't get in, they can't get out. But great, great question. Oh, and that's always the concern when we talk about bees as we think about stinging.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah. Next item on agenda, everybody's favorite sheriff, Mr. Dino.
First of all, I want to thank my assistants. I had a promise to ride along and to get out of jail free card, they can be passing out a handout for me. Um, I, I do have to take a minute and say, it's really interesting, I apologize I walked in a little late, but two very different presentations in front of me and both very positive, it's, it's nice. Problem is I don't have a check for you and I'm allergic to bees. So I mean, it's like, I didn't be here tonight. Um, I want to thank you for a few minutes of your time and the reason I, I'm starting with school boards, I started up in Northfield tonight, I'm going to try to hit all the school boards in the county and schools and then some community organizations. Because I proposed a plan about a month ago and I want, and I feel that school boards, teachers, parents, people who would attend these meetings or watch us online are the kind of people who are interested in what I'm proposing and why. And I'm not asking for anything from the board, I'm not asking for a vote for, you know, a vote to support what I want to do, my proposal. I'm just asking that if you hear it in the, in the community or people speak with you about it, that you heard it, and I don't like to say from the horse's mouth, but you heard it from, directly from the sheriff. So what happened is we know across the country, almost a year and a half, police agencies have been hit very hard with retention and recruitment issues. Senior officers in most of the major cities are leaving, a lot has to do with cultural things that are going on in our society. However, in Fulton County in our sheriff's department, we have had a drain for 20 years of deputy sheriffs. And so what I proposed about a month ago, presented a press release, I sent a memo to all the members of the board of supervisors, is that we adopt a 20-year pension plan instead of a 25-year plan. Most sheriff's departments have had traditionally 25-year pension plans. All municipal police agencies and 97% of the agencies in New York State have a 20-year plan, state police, Largisville, Johnstown, Amsterdam. So what happened is historically sheriff's departments were non-civil service competitive. So you could hire anybody as long as they met certain physical thresholds and they all, they had to take the same academy, they have to, they had to, you know, pass the same medical requirements, but they weren't protected civil service. And so therefore they could not lateral or transfer to other police agencies. So you got people who joined the sheriff's department traditionally be there for their 25-year career. Once they changed the law and made deputy sheriffs civil service competitive, they could then lateral. So between 2005 and 2015, in those 10 years, 17 deputies left to go to other agencies. 2016, when I became sheriff, in 2021, another 17 have left for other agencies. So 34 in the last 16, 10, 16 years, okay? Now, some people would tell you they left because they don't like the sheriff, but the union does exit interviews. And when the union does exit interviews, they find that the top three reasons are salary benefits, uh, salary benefits and pension. Pension's kind of like the third reason. But under state law, pensions are prohibited from being discussed during negotiations unless all the parties agree. So a sheriff, I want to do something to retain people and recruit people to come in. Right now, two thirds of people on the road, men and women who serve in patrol positions, two thirds of them have less than a year experience. Now, any of you who are teachers or work in education, you don't, your first year as a teacher, your second year as a teacher, your third year as a teacher, it's till your third or fourth year where you really start to groove and you start to understand that it's different than how you were taught and, and, and know what you're doing. Same thing with law enforcement. Law ability is tremendous with young officers, your interactions. I have, I have a deputy who turns 21 next year, 20, uh, next week, 21 next week. He carries a gun, he has a badge, he arrests people. 21 years old, not even 21. Now, you know that that creates some issues of having people constantly, the constant turnover and having young people. So I either have people in training or people training. I have 29 people on the law enforcement side, 21 on the road. Of the 21 on the road, I have four people in police academy and one out on military. So right now in the county of 500 square miles with 30,000 people outside the cities, I've got 16 people, 16 people doing the work of 21 positions. So what I wanted to do was propose to the board of supervisors, which I did through a memo, and that we set up a pension plan like cities and like 24 of the sheriff's officers in the state to give them 20-year plan. Because a lot of, a lot of the young guys like more money and better benefits, but if they get, if they talk about pension during negotiations, then the government, the county would ask them to give something up, get something. I want to do it outside negotiations as a benefit to keep people. I've had several people from other agencies who have left us, said that if we do get a 20-year plan, they would come back. So I come to you so I can present to you what my proposal is so that if you do have a conversation in the community, you know what, what, what you're hearing and what I was talking about. One of the things about the proposal is that I wrote to the state and you can request a, a nexus of switching from a 25-year plan to a 20-year plan. An upfront cost of $880,000 to buy in, lot of money, tons of money. But we have a $20 million undesignated fund balance, which means we have $20 million in county assets that's sitting there. A lot of people aren't aware of this fact. From 2000, 2014, county reduced sheriff's department from 39 people on the road to 26. Say that again. 2000 to 2014, we went from a department of law enforcement of 39 people, investigators, captain, undersheriff sheriff, sergeants, corporals and patrolmen, 39 down to 26. That's one third of a police department, one third. And that's even before defund police came in and we were ahead of curve. That's a good brag. But one third of them, we've restored three, they've restored three positions for me, which I appreciate. But it's hard to keep people. And so what I, what I proposed is out of that $20 million fund balance, go to the state if we pay, pay the $880,000 with interest, if we pay $116,000 a year for 10 years, we can buy in to the retirement program. Now the benefit of that is people right now, I have two thirds are under a year experience. I've got eight people could go out the door tomorrow on a 25-year plan. Several of them said that they would stay with a 20-year plan because every year after 20, they get 2% more as opposed to leaving at 20 with 50, or 25, 50%. So those who can go now, I got 25, eight out of 20, who can go on a 25-year plan now, uh, several of them would stay. So I, I tell you that, I tell you where the money I think can come from, that's transparency. I'm just asking that if you do hear conversations about it or people ask you that, that you have an opportunity to hear from me what I'm trying to do. I don't want people's taxes to go up. I, I don't think people in this day and age would want that. I do think it's fair to treat them the same as other officers. Again, 97% of the agencies in the state have a 20-year plan. We had a situation a month and a half ago where an investigator and a sergeant went to a house in Oppenheimer. Oppenheimer got 1,500 people in it. They went to the house to serve a misdemeanor appearance ticket, not even taking them into custody, serve misdemeanor parents ticket. Sergeant went to the front door, investigator went around the side, man came around the corner with a 22 with a water bottle on the end and empty water bottle, presumably as a silencer. The investigator drew his handgun on the person and said, no, no, no. The person said, the man said to the investigator, thank God you, turned the gun on himself and killed himself. That happened in Fulton County, that happened in Oppenheimer. And the thing we thought about is what if it was one of our young guys got less than a year, or two of our young guys had less than a year? It could have been, it could have been a total different outcome. So people don't hear these things. So whether you're a glacial police officer, Johnstown or the sheriff's state police, it's a very dangerous job. And again, I'm trying to do it outside on negotiations so that it's a reason for people to stay and a reason for people to come to us. Do you have any questions? I want to thank you guys for passing that out. Hey, I want to thank you guys for passing that out for me. Stop and get your get out of jail free card on the way out. Any, uh, any questions at all? I do appreciate the opportunity to speak both to you and to your viewers. I know it's not Fox, but on YouTube, but at least it's TV, all right? Uh, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next item on agenda is public comment. If anyone out in the virtual world has a comment, please leave a comment on Facebook page, someone will reach out to you in the next few days to answer anything. Shake your head. All right, move on to the next item for discussion. We have the board of education pitch from the October 5th meeting. Anyone have any questions? I can yell really loud and ask. I get a motion to approve those minutes. Captain, it's activated by Benny and because that's in Ohio, we have to do a roll call, sorry.
Robert Curtis.
That is his first one on here. President, yes.
Kelly DeBaio.
Yes.
Kevin Cusel.
Yes.
John Mott.
Mr. Steve.
Sheriff Mulling.
Yes.
Vincent Salviem.
Yes.
Edward Gerges.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else have anything else for board discussion to me? All right, move on to the next item, superintendent's report. Lieutenant Hall.
Good evening, everybody. Um, before I start, just want to, uh, point out that our CSE assistant director, Ms. Audrey Francis here with us. Audrey will be on the agenda today. Uh, we're excited about her joining our administrative team. She will be assistant CSE director for elementary education. Also, I want to congratulate our, all of our fall athletic teams. Um, you know, I think it was a good, it was great to see them back in normal competition after what happened last year. Our boys soccer team certainly had an exciting run in the sectional, winning and stood out. And our boys football team, I think the first time in almost 30 years then, how long, it's been a long time.
It was 2000.
What's it, 2000? So 20, for 21 years, we've been playing for the championship game this Saturday. Uh, we have a fan bus, we have some chaplains, our game's at 3 o'clock at CBA, I believe. And, uh, certainly great to see, uh, one of our, you know, historically, uh, successful programs reemerging. Congratulations Coach Robert and his staff and the players and wish them well this Saturday. I'd like to thank the water department for their prompt response to the water main break at, uh, Park Terrace Elementary. We lost the day of instruction at that school beginning last week and, uh, their prompt response had that water made fixed, uh, very early the next day. If it had happened on an afternoon of the day, I don't think we would have lost the day, but can't thank water department enough for their quick assistance. Also, uh, in addition to that, I wanted to thank, uh, CG Roxanne for the 140 cases of water that they donated because of the water main break. The water wasn't potable for 48 hours and to receive 140 cases of water to ensure that the students and staff had more than water to drink, uh, during that time was certainly very appreciative. Along the same lines, I want to thank, uh, company Van Hook, Chad Rulson, Tim Ryan and Brian, uh, what's his name? Skip, excuse me, uh, for their work. They worked late into the night at Boulevard, people don't even know about this, but a boiler circulator pump went bad, uh, last week and was leaking all over and they went till late in the night. I thought we might have to shut Boulevard down for a day because there was going to be no heat, uh, last Wednesday, but they, Van Hook came out from Plattsburgh, sent a guy to Albany and Chad, him and Brian, uh, worked really late into the night and got that done. We didn't have to, Brian was aware of it and Nick was probably aware of it and that was about it. So, uh, we're happy to, I might have told you. I did, okay. I was, uh, I was, I was a little nervous about that, but I thank them for their going above and beyond. Obviously it's a part of their job, but, uh, for the, uh, it took the skill set that they had to get that work done. It's not easy to replace an, an old part, uh, and when you have valves that are failing that shouldn't have failed, Bob Grande actually came from Turner as well. So we're going to work to replace a lot of those valves that failed, uh, when the circulator pump failed. I also want to thank PBA Glimmerstone Police Benevolent Association for a $1,000 donation for cops and kicks. Uh, that's certainly very generous and will go to ensuring our students have proper footwear as a cold months approach. And I also like to thank Maureen Gabrie and Diana Martini for a $400 donation for our backpack and holiday donation. They have great people in this community, people who care, people who step up and, uh, we're very appreciative for all the people doing for the students of our district. Couple of things I want to talk about, uh, one of them is the Juneteenth holidays. Governor Cuomo, uh, a couple of years ago signed into legislation that New York State would recognize Juneteenth as a state holiday. It's not a federal holiday, uh, but it is mandated that New York State school not be in session on noon 19th. If it falls on a Saturday, districts, public entities are required to, uh, I don't want to say celebrate or acknowledge it, I'm not saying shouldn't acknowledge it, but you don't have to necessarily give people a day off. If it falls on a Sunday, you have to acknowledge it on that following Monday. So we will not have school in, uh, this falls on a Sunday this coming school year, 21, 20 to school year. So June 2022, it falls on a Sunday, so there will be no school on that Monday. So the question comes up, is this a paid holiday or not? Uh, it's not a paid holiday, it's not federally mandated paid holiday. So we're just going to schedule around it. Paid holidays are dictated by collective bargaining agreements and that's going to be something that the district will have to consider at that time. So, um, at this time, teachers contract 182 days scheduled, uh, we're just going to work around Juneteenth. I would recommend just kind of sticking with that moving forward. Um, as far as a 12-month employee, uh, that's something we can consider. We can bring them in if we find a critical need for people to work, like there is kind of Hollywood or holiday differential, might be, they may be eligible for it. So that's something that just wanted to get the board's attention of how we plan to address it this year. We know school session on Monday and we'll, the teachers, the 10-month employee schedule, we'll just work around that. Some years it could be the day of work after graduation for PTE or something like that, but they actually say to not count it as professional development day. Not, still, uh, somewhat ambiguous of how we'll, we'll handle it moving forward, but I just wanted to put it on everyone's radar. Just wanted to re, uh, hopefully people saw the video of the loft that's coming at the old YWCA and it's unfortunate they had to cancel the, uh, open house event, scheduled for this evening, but they are set to launch on the 16th of November next week, the loft at the old YWCA in Bleecker Street. Really excited about the partnership, uh, Keenan Methodist Church, the school district. Uh, the city's been inch cold, the, uh, Mayor Tanner certainly supports it. Integra has been, or Siemens and not Integra anymore, it's the other company. Watch the video, you know, it's company. Carl Stewart is the gentleman who was with Integra who switched and he's been, they and Siemens done a lot of pro bono work on the loft. Diane Ma, I worked with Diana at OESJ, she's a, she was a great educator, uh, she has a lot of energy, she cares about kids, she, she's a Grammy nominee. I don't know how many educators can say they're Grammy nominees, but she's the right person to have at the forefront of an effort like this to engage, uh, students who are disengaged from the school community. She's, uh, got limitless energy and we really hope students take advantage of this opportunity. Tuesdays and Thursdays to start, we'll have tutors there made for by, uh, federal funds, um, from the district and we're really hoping that this can be a great outlet for many of our students. Transportation, uh, transportation is a, an issue and unfortunately, uh, we could find out that we could lose find out that we could lose transportation services again at a moment's notice. There's still a major shortage, uh, the virus, the pandemic is still impacting, uh, that critical component of our services. So we're having conversations all the time with HFM, with Johnstown School District, and, uh, this isn't unique to Bubbsville and Johnstown, this is an issue everywhere, but it's definitely hitting us hard, continuing to hit us hard. If anybody out there is a bus driver or CD, has a CDL and wishes to be a bus driver, please reach out to us and we'll put you in touch with HFM Bozies. So I just want to make people aware that that is something that a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, we had to shut down our transportation services. That could happen again. That's just the grim reality of what we're facing right now. Speaking of grim realities, uh, student attendance, you know, I've asked the principals to, to give us a weekly update on student attendance. We understand a lot of students are missing school because of quarantine or sickness and be maybe being more cautious than they would in normal school years and staying home, and that's good. But far too many of our students are missing far too much school. That's just a fact. And, and it, those of us in this business who are charged with educating the students of this community, when we see middle school students missing 30, 40 days of school in the two and a half months, I have to ask what the parents are doing. Um, and we have these conversations all the time, we're on, we're having conversations with CPS, uh, with Ovation, this is a systemic community problem, and we need the parents to value the education and the future of their children. Uh, I don't know how else to say that, uh, without being offensive. I'm trying, I'm certainly not trying to be offensive to people, because most of the parents in our community do value education and are supportive of what we're doing here and believe that we are helping to improve their students' future, but far too many parents in this community do not send their children to school. It's not like a broken record, because I say this every few meetings, but it's sometimes the numbers I see on my desk are staggering. And, uh, you know, we have community outreach programs nonstop, we do our street teams, there's another one coming up next week in the high school, the middle school district, the elementary knocking on the doors of these homes, uh, of kids that are not coming to school. And we have so many tools in the toolbox, uh, to try to change this, and we really need a change of mindset of people to really, you know, believe in your kid's future and have, they don't want to go to school, tough luck, get them to school. Once by the time, I don't, I was younger, seven, it was not an option. Staying home is not an option. I have three kids, staying home is not an option, unless you're genuinely sick. So I'm not sure how that's, turns into a, it's such a high absenteeism rate in our community, because it's just bad for kids. Grading policy discussion, uh, update. So on the back of this, or on attached to your agenda, you'll see a grading policy update. Dr. Wojcicki's been leading this conversation, and I'm going to ask him to kind of walk us through, uh, where we are with the grading policy update.
Thank you. So we began this discussion, uh, in early September with the administrative team, and specifically looking at the minimum threshold of quarterly marking period grades for our students. Last year, that threshold was moved from a 50 minimum to a 60, obviously due to the pandemic and the, you know, the outlying factors that result from that. There was some concern about continuing with the 60 of a minimum grade, but, uh, we're still in discussion with our department chairs, as well as the building principals, and the 60 threshold seems to be getting some traction with the caveat that, that can only be used for two of the four marking periods. So students must pass with grade of 60 or higher in two of the four marking periods, and they, you know, the final exam will also be factored into their overall average for the, the school year. So there are a couple of examples there that you'll see on the proposed grade policy that just outlines what it would look like for a full year course, and geometry being the example that we used. And then down below would be a half-year course. And the marking period grades are counted twice, um, in that average, overall average, to get to the five, um, average, you know, five numbers that are averaged to get that final average of a 70. So, um, again, this is in the hands of the building administrators, as well as the department chairs at this point in time. We hope to have a formal proposal to you at the December meeting and allow you some time to reflect on that and determine if that's a direction that we're just to go in. Any questions on the proposal that's shared before you this evening?
Shannon, you had a couple of questions about the 40 and 60. Do you want to talk about that?
My question had to do with what, originally, the, the question was what did, uh, what was passing for the New York State Regents, and that is 65.
Correct.
And, um, so, so then my second question was what was the current, uh, passing grade in, in classes? And that is...
65 as well.
65 or 55 with safety net for especially the students on, on preschool. I, I think Chris and I had a conversation about the, uh, limiting that. I understand the concern from some of our teacher's staff that they don't want it, they feel like we're giving it away. Like, if you make three marking periods 60, a kid can try hard this quarter, get an 80, and just mail it in and do nothing for the rest of the year, and maybe, and then take his, his urges on a final exam. My, my opinion is that's a true outlier, that not too many able students are going to try to take advantage of a system like that. Uh, we're trying to make it so that, so when something happens or like miss a lot of school for whatever, whatever reason, and we're talking just high school, this is only credit bearing courses, and eighth grade students who are accelerated for math and science. So it's a 912 issue, and for a select number of eighth grade math and science student, um, you know, there's different philosophies. I mean, giving kids zeros, you're pretty much setting them up for failure. I mean, you're, that's 65 points below testing. That's like drowning in 100 feet of water, and you can drown an inch of water. Uh, five points below passing, is that what the floor grade should be? There's some districts leaving it 60 in the best of times, not just during a pandemic. I have friends who teach, uh, downstate, Saguana in particular, is one I know has a floor grade 60. I don't know what, I don't claim to have all the answers, and I certainly want our department chairs and teachers to be heated, but there is, the consensus is, there is no consensus. There's different opinions on what we should do in this regard. I, I don't know, 50 is the right grade. Um, you're 50 points from passing, you needed, uh, an 80 to offset 50. So if we're talking about, you know, maybe we need to really look at what grading and what we're evaluating anyway. Is it, is it attainment of skills and, uh, comprehension, mastery? That's a deeper dive into what we are going to assess it as a district and valuing. If it's, are, you know, the student does his homework every day, um, therefore, you know, this person should pass, as well as a kid who doesn't do the homework. Some of our students don't have the best setting to do homework, right? They're required to do too much, or there's too much chaos, frankly, to do homework, so. Chris is doing a great job, the principal's leading this conversation. I just wanted to board, ultimately, you're the decision makers on this, make recommendations. I'd like to know if the board has concerns with keeping a 60 this year? If you feel that was too generous in the past year? Or if, uh, just want to open it up really, to see if there's any concerns about this. I think given the pandemic situation, I don't see as too generous, and I'll be honest, for a kid in high school the last two years, it was, it was a giveaway from state, and based on our graduation rate, kids did not take advantage of it. You need to pass the Regents, all you got to do is pass the course, and, I mean, yeah, our graduation went up a little bit, but not what you would expect if kids were actually taking advantage of what the state gave them. And I believe in one of those email chains, somebody went through in votes, maybe Andy did it?
Yeah, Andy.
And even then, when he was, the kids that pulled it out with the, with our policy last year, we had one or two per class that, that scored, you know, got 101 marking period and mailed it in the rest of the year. Yeah, do you change your policy that hurts the vast majority of students who are struggling or on the boat? Because you don't want to keep those few kids, I mean, passing the course or cheating the system. And that is the dilemma. Frank, that's the dilemma that's driving the conversation, and it should, because you don't want to be a, a school system setting it up for kids to, to escape, like, we're not really helping those kids. But you don't throw the baby out of the bathwater, and if you have a lot of kids that are struggling because their academ, their academic career's been interrupted, I feel like we ought to do the best we can to, to set the table without doing the work for them, keep them in striking distance so they can be successful.
It sounds like those are the kids that aren't taking advantage of it anyway. They're not here, so why do they even care about taking advantage of their grade? So, I mean, you got kids missing, you know, 30, 40 days in two months, they're not, they're not here anyway. So, I mean, you know, I, I guess on the, on the teacher's defense, you know, we're giving it away? They're not showing up anyway. We're stoving them with 60, so, I mean, I, I kind of get, you know, I get both sides. I, you know, I get what you're saying, but, I mean, I'm saying, Jim, I'm, I'm not a teacher by any means, but, you know, but from their perspective, I can see why that would, you know, bother them a little bit, you know? They're not showing up, they're not even showing up to school, and we're going to give them a 60. So, I mean, that's, I don't know, that might be it.
It begs the conversation, if, if zeros are right, you know, if zeros are 100 matrix is even the appropriate way to be doing this. So that's, so that's another part of the conversation. But I do like, Chris and I were talking this morning, that, that two, passing two or four marking periods, uh, you have to get a 65 or better. That if you get a third grade that's below 60, it's counting, it'd be part of your, so if you get 60, 60, 52, 80, that 52 is in there, you know, but that's going to be counted into grades, so that is, it's trying to minimize how much we're, we're, uh, setting the table for them for lack of a better. We'll, we'll keep working at it, um, I think for this first marking period, Chris sent an email that we're keeping at 60, so the floor grade is 60.
Regardless of whatever minimum grade we go with, we will evaluate processes for here and never change the new main board, 22, 23 again.
So kind of like the Hippocratic, Hippocratic oath, right? First, do no harm. All right, uh, last thing, um, is the, uh, well, two things. National Honor, Honor Society Policy Proposal, put it in front of you, you know, we don't have to talk about this right now, I just, this was, uh, given to us, and potential academic dishonesty policy, it's not necessarily policy we don't, it's a district, this would be a protocol procedure for them, but if you would, just kind of take a look at it, when you have time, and, uh, share your thoughts with Chris and I. We will be meeting with the high administration, the Honor Society advisors, uh, to make a determination. One of our advisors might still be here. She left. And last, Chris is going to talk a little bit about, uh, November 2nd Conference Day and the PD Committee, they're going to be formed.
So we did have a productive conference day last Tuesday, that was November 2nd. We started with, uh, two social emotional learning workshops, uh, the focal point of which were strengthening relationships with students and families. As we've heard tonight, you know, we have some concerns with student attendance and developing strong relationships with students and their families can help to improve certainly attendance, but students are feeling valued mother here. So the SEL Committee's watched a video in, with a student who was a former gang member in a small city in Louisiana, um, talked about his upbringing and his schooling experience. He was your typical class clown, always sought negative attention, and on the first day of school, when he was a junior in high school, his teacher recognized that he just wanted some attention, instead of making that a problematic situation, the teacher gave him some civil responsibilities, greeting his peers in, in the hallway before they entered the room, some simplistic things as that. And from that, he became a successful student, no longer misbehaved, because he now felt the reason to go to school, and he felt respected by this particular teacher. So that student, his name is DJ Batiste, and his teacher, Anna Porter, they now travel the country presenting this story, and we're hoping to have them visit to present to our faculty and staff during our March 11th Conference Day. And Bozies is looking into this to see if they can help us with it, as far as the cost goes, um, in regards to this, and it could be something that we open it up to other neighboring school districts if they wish to attend as well. So keep posted on that as we move throughout the winter. We also had three productive iReady trainings for elementary teachers on the second. There were two, I'm sorry, three two-hour workshops in which our teachers were shown how to utilize iReady to determine our students' current levels of proficiency and to address their needs as we move forward. So, uh, our teachers really benefited from that, they've been incorporating iReady into their daily operations. We look forward to seeing the results from that throughout the course of the school year. We also had several other workshops throughout the course of the school year. Jen Hazard, you heard from earlier this evening, she presented at the high school about how to best engage our students, shared some practices that can be incorporated into our daily operations. Jen was very busy that day. She also reviewed those new science learning standards that she mentioned earlier, and she reviewed those with our staff at Boulevard. Kelly provided some parent square training to our high school staff. Mike Etherington reviewed Tap App for our staff at the high school as well. I think most of her familiar with that, that's the software that can enact a lockdown in case of emergency. Homework reviewed, uh, the specifications of Tap App again with our staff. We also reviewed EdLaw 2D with faculty and staff throughout the district, and last but certainly not least, Morgan Garcia and Leanna Young facilitated professional development on how to most effectively provide instruction for our students who are learning English as a new language. So we appreciate all of the presenters and their time dedicated to that day, something that I think all of our faculty and staff were benefited from that. And in regards to our future conference days and planning and preparation, we will convene a district-wide committee that Dave mentioned earlier, and that'll primarily comprised of department heads and grade level chairpersons, in conjunction with administrative staff, of course. And that is an effort to really ensure that we're meeting the needs of our faculty and staff with our professional learning opportunities. And we'll have that first meeting, even our planning somewhere early December to continue the planning for our March 11th Conference Day. So we look forward to those conversations and just ensuring that we're providing professional development that's of interest and of need to our faculty and staff. So that's something that's probably long overdue, but we will put that into place for this year and in a few years to, um, again, begin planning that March 11th Conference Day, as well as September's Conference Days, because those will be here before we know it. So, thank you for that.
Any questions? Senator, report. And we will adjourn session for contractual issues. Uh, next item is administrative reports. Our Director of Student Support Services, thank you, Martin.
All right, before I talk about special ed plans, and I promise I will, I will not go over every single page of it, um, I just wanted to give you some big updates as far as the office. We've had some changes in the Office of Student Support Services. As Mr. Halloran had mentioned, Audrey Frank is here as far as, um, starting as an Assistant Director of Student Support Services, she'll be working our elementary, um, programs. And Sarah Sweet has started back in August, um, she's Assistant Director of Student Support Services, and she's working primarily with our secondary programs. We've also had two chairpeople join us, Jen Pomeroy and Kristen Thompson, they started in August. Also, Sarah and I have been working very closely with them, um, since August. They recently started, um, running some meetings independently, um, so it, it should be a big help to us. Thank you for that. Despite the changes, Tina Avery and Kluuska, our secretaries, um, they're still in the office, they're our constants, and they keep us moving in the right direction. We have had some, um, trainings recently, our special education teachers and all of our providers, um, went through IP training. We basically wanted everybody to have the same consistent, um, training to make sure that our development of IPs is consistent, we had the components in there that we need, we need to have. Um, we've also... We've also done some trainings in terms of New York State alternate assessment eligibility, secondary transition, which is an indicator that we'll be reporting on next year, and the transition between early intervention and preschool, which we'll be reporting on for this year. Let's see. Staffing, we still have a couple of positions that we're looking for, trying to fill. We've had some difficulties filling, filling those positions. We're looking for a special education teacher at the high school level, secondary level, and also a school psychologist. So we keep trying to recruit. So if any of you know anybody, please send them our way. And despite all the changes that have happened in our, we've worked really hard over the past couple of years to really work on the relationships with our families. That's still something that is really important to us. We want our families to trust us, you know, they can call us with anything if they have concerns, questions. If they want to talk about the student's program, check in. We want them to feel welcome and to know that they can depend on us. So that's a constant message from the office. In terms of the special education report. What I'll do is a basically a brief summary. I know you all have reports. If you have questions, you can ask along the way, but basically.
Thank you, sir, no questions.
Okay, never mind. Basically, this is a graphic of enrollment of our students with disabilities. These small blue areas are preschool students receiving special education services. And the larger bars are our school students. So we've had some fluctuation, but we've been pretty consistent. This is where we're projecting for this year as far as where we are right now. And we're kind of looking ahead, looking at what our needs might be. But basically, we've been pretty close here. This right here is our classification rate, and this is again, school age students. Basically, we're looking at some shifts. We did go up quite a bit in eighteen, nineteen. We dropped some and we're kind of on that downward trend. The state average, even a couple of years ago when we reported, was I think fifteen point three. They have raised that to eighteen percent. So while at the end of last year, we are slightly over that, we're looking at hitting about eighteen for this year. I did see, you know, in terms of the increase, the state average, I did see some documentation and some reference to the pandemic and the effects of the pandemic. While we're not classifying students certainly because of a pandemic, there have been some effects. Students who were already classified and would have been receiving services or programs, extra support, they weren't necessarily receiving those services and they weren't necessarily, you know, reinforced throughout their school day. If they weren't, every, were hybrid or remote. So some of our students, especially our younger students who maybe are classified speech and language impaired and they have many articulation errors, even though they still worked with a speech pathologist, that connection as far as the speech pathologist sharing strategies, the classroom and having it supported and reinforced throughout the day, it wasn't necessarily there as frequently. Many of our younger students actually end up being declassified, but I think some of them were still classified because of the interruptions that we experienced due to the pandemic. If that makes sense. This right here is a graphic of the least restrictive environment. We always try to have the least restrictive approach when working out programs for students. The first three bars are there, that's where we really want to aim to be. Having our students in the classroom for eighty, eighty percent or more of their school day. And these are the last three years. So basically, we've had a little bit of fluctuation. That's the, the one that we really want to go for, the above eighty percent. Right here is forty to seventy-nine percent of their day. And this, this relays more to our self-contained classrooms or portions of their day in a self-contained setting. So it's less than forty percent. And this over here would be in the school, so they aren't in the general education setting. These numbers right here are the percentage for each of the areas. And this right here, this is a blueprint that state put out several years ago regarding the way to imbue student performance for students with disabilities. Basically, it's, it's the basic principles. Students engage in self-advocacy. We always want them to advocate for themselves. The students age, by the time they hit middle school, we encourage our students to attend their own CSE meetings, to advocate for themselves, to let us know what their needs are and if they feel they're being met. Parents and other family members are engaged as meaningful partners in the special education process and in the education of their child. We definitely want parent input, parent involvement, and we welcome that every single day. Our teachers, they're designing, providing and assessing the effectiveness of specially designed instruction to provide the students with access to participate and progress in the general education curriculum. Our, our teachers are always modifying and torturing along the way, providing support to our students so that they can, they can have some success. Let's see, our teachers are using research-based instructional teaching and learning strategies and support for students with disabilities.
Can you speak up just a little bit? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Our teachers are using the research-based instruction, instructional teaching and learning strategies while teaching in the classroom. The schools are providing the multi-tiered systems of supports in terms of behavior and academics. So basically what that means is tier one is what everybody gets in the classroom. Tier two might mean that somebody's having some difficulties, so we're in a little bit extra for them in terms of support. It'd be much more individualized to that student. Our schools are providing high-quality inclusive programs and activities. We're always trying to input our students into every aspect possible of their day. And we're constantly looking at, like that previous slide, their participation in the general education setting. Let's see, schools provide appropriate instruction for students with disabilities in career development, opportunities to participate in work-based learning. That's very prevalent in our secondary schools in terms of promoting our, our students to get out there and get into the workforce and, you know, be productive citizens and community members. Wasn't five minutes, but. Does anybody have questions?
I have a thought, Nikki, and your team, the one thing I would say about special ed, although the pandemic certainly exacerbated these students' experiences more than others, right? Most students struggled with remote learning, with hybrid learning. None struggled more than our students who are OHI or ED and the L D students for sure. These students are deprived the much-needed scaffolding to their education that they really need in the best times. And I think our department, our special ed department has really done a nice job of being service-oriented, building relationships with families. You know, I'm not saying we're, we're doing well as we can, there's always room for improvement, but the relationship between our CSE office and families they serve, it's the highest that I've seen it since I've been here, so. I think we got a good team in place. I think we work well with their administrators in the buildings. And I really hope to see that translate into better outcomes for our students. Multiple pathways, graduation is something that we got to get everybody singing from the same hymn book. And it doesn't, it's not a high school issue, this starts long before high school. All right, next item, I need Jen as the student board member to report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Massa Master. Marilyn couldn't be here today, so I'm taking her place. Not trying to sound too negative, but there are two issues from our school that I would like to report. Continuing with the issues in our bathrooms, some students reached out to Marilyn to, they told her about the presence of drawings on the walls in our bathrooms, which disrespect our learning environment. So I wanted to report that and I really wanted to say that we really appreciate how our school is, how hard our school is working to resolve all of these, these issues in the bathrooms and of that. Another issue that some students have brought to me is about the lunch. Some of them said that it's repetitive a little bit and some of them said that there, there isn't enough lunch, there isn't enough food in the lunch meal. I know like how complicated the process of like providing lunch is, but there are some students, and a lot of, a lot of students that they're not able to have their lunch meal unless it's provided by the school. So if that can be taken into consideration, that would be great.
I'm sorry, it's just clarification, that's not, some students are not getting enough to eat, is that what you said?
Yeah, there's not like, not, it's the quantity, it's not enough. Yeah, I've heard that a lot.
Are you, there's a way, you have to find ways to, people, a lot of kids are food waste, right?
Yeah.
So you can't wait for kids to say, I didn't eat my apple. I don't know if that's legal for health reasons for students to, rather than throw.
That was a, they, it was whole milk, apples, the fruit of the day, whatever's in a, the cups that can be safely, you know, redistributed to different students. But it's well within the constraints of the lunch program.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So yeah, that's again, like we, we genuinely appreciate our districts and our board's efforts to provide us with the best learning if possible. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Were y'all done? Sorry, I couldn't. Yeah, I'm sorry. The bathroom issues, I know Dr. Malli spoke to that a couple of meetings ago. You know, the, one of the things that we look to do is to get more supervision in the bathrooms. Is that a concern? I couldn't hear you well.
So Marilyn, like, some, she dropped it and she saw there's some drawings on the walls.
Graffiti. Feedy, like, kids drawing inappropriate things on the wall? Was it removed properly?
I don't think so. I'm not, like, well, she, she mentioned it in her report, so I'm not sure exactly about things.
Okay. You know which restroom?
She, she went to the restroom.
I'll ask Dr. Malli to survive to follow up with her and just make sure that if there's inappropriate things written on walls, those should be handled within a day. As soon as we find out about it, those should be handled. Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you. Move on to recommended items. We have eight point zero one through eighteen point three five. Anyone need anything bold or discussed before we move to the ball? All right, motion to those items. By Benny, seconded by Kelly. Then we'll call, please.
Robert Curtis.
Yes.
Kelly DeMayo. Kevin Cusell. John Lott.
Yes.
Sharon Coley. Vincent Salviam. Ed Sturgis.
Yes.
All right, and then I just need a motion to adjourn for executive session, discuss several contract items. Motion by Benny, seconded by John. Let's go, we'll call for that, please.
Robert Curtis.
Yes.
Kelly DeMayo. Kevin Cusell. John Lott.
Yes.
Sharon Coley.
Yes.
Vincent Salviam. Ed Sturgis.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. There'll be no action after the executive session.